This is the City of Wapaka, third Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
All right, welcome everybody to tonight's regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 15, 2020. I call this meeting to order. It is 6:03 PM. And let's begin by saying the pledge of allegiance. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job Eric. A lot of us like leading us down a song there too. All right, let's go, let's go to the clerk's open meeting statement. Sandy?
This meeting and all of the meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
All right, and would you take role for the, of the council members?
Brian Smith. Steve Hackett. Steve Hackett. Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pachowski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
All right, since we can't see everybody here, let's, let's make sure we know who else is here tonight. Obviously Erin is here tonight, Erin Johnson, our city administrator, Sandy Stibbs, our treasurer, or I'm sorry, our city clerk Kathy, I saw that Kathy Caza was on. Justin Behrens is on. Andrew Whitman, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thanks. Chief Ozell?
Yep, I'm here.
And I did see Tom Hart also was here.
I'm here.
Thanks Tom. And then we also have guests tonight. We have Rick and Tammy from the, they're representing the arts group tonight, so when we give their report. Rick, Tammy, how are you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're doing great. Thanks for having us tonight.
Brian, Peg Brinton's here too.
Oh, I'm sorry Peg.
That's okay.
The library is here. Sorry, I should have written them all down. I did, you're the first one I saw when I turned on too. Okay, so we're full attendance tonight. You have a consent agenda that's in front of you. Sandy, it looks like you have an item that you need to explain?
Um, I do not.
You don't?
Nope, I don't.
Okay. All right, so consent agenda, this is where we vote on all of the items under the consent agenda with one motion unless council or staff would like to see one of those items moved to the regular agenda where we would act on those individually. Anybody that would like to see anything moved?
Move to approve, Martin.
Alan, second.
Motion by Dimitri Martin, second by Alan Keeland, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Anybody that wants to abstain? All right, let's go to the regular agenda. Sandy, it looks like nothing there under the regular.
Right.
All right, so again, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Olson to approve.
Lori to second.
A motion by Eric Olson, second by Lori Chestnut, that we approve the regular agenda. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Anybody that would like to abstain? Motion carried. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we have, Sandy, it's probably sitting on your desk, right? So
Yes.
We have a certificate of appreciation to Justin Behrens for his five years of service to the city. I don't know why the rest of the staff said they thought it was a lot more than five years, but they did. But Justin, thank you for your first five years of service to the city of Wapaka. I hope it's many years to go. Anything you'd like to say?
Uh, just thank you, Mayor, and thank the city for giving me an opportunity to, just to give back to the community and do a job that I really enjoy.
All right, thank you.
Yay, Justin.
So, and then next, we have another certificate of appreciation to Sandy Stibbs for her 20 years of service to the city. Sandy, again, thank you for all your good service. Anything you would like to say?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to work for the city. It's been, it's been very, very nice. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You might be the only department head, and of course you've just became a department head the last few years, but you might be the only department head that, oh, Peg was here too, I think, before I was mayor, so.
Yes.
There aren't too many, so.
So thank you.
Yeah, no, thanks. All right, public input. Sandy or Erin, did you get anything on public input?
I did not.
I did not, Mayor.
All right, let's move on then to the community department head reports. And let's, let's start with the arts group and Rick and Tammy, welcome.
Looks like they might be froze.
Yeah, it does, doesn't it? Rick and, well, I don't know. Okay. Rick and Tammy, we cannot hear you. Oh, here we go. Let's try that again then. Unmute your microphone.
Yeah, sorry, we lost a little bit of connection there, so can you hear us now?
We can.
Good morning, everyone.
Hey, great.
So, go ahead.
So, everybody can see and hear. Thank you very much. So, Mr. Mayor, city administrator, council members and guests, I'm going to read a little bit here to make this efficient this evening. We are Rick and Tammy Walter of A Touch of Glass, 112 North Main Street, Wapaka. Thank you for having us on tonight. Pursuant to the 2018 cultural plan, the Wapaka Arts and Culture Network was formed. Members include the arts and culture groups and civic organizations partnering with the city of Wapaka in the cultural plan. As a member of the Wapaka Arts Area Arts and Culture Network, my wife Tammy is a glass artist who works on Main Street. However, some of you may not realize that she is also a woman-owned business as well as a building owner in the historic downtown riverfront districts. The city of Wapaka has supported our efforts over the past three years to establish a successful business presence on Main Street, and for that, we do thank you. We'd also like to give a special thanks to local law enforcement for all their efforts recently in the unrest during protests in our downtown area. Thank you, thank you so much. We're excited to announce that the construction on the residential portion of the 112 North Main Street project has recently started again. When complete, it'll hopefully be one of several more artisan live-work situations in the historic downtown Wapaka. As you recall, many people were involved in the rezoning of downtown to create the B7 Riverfront District where we are located, making special use of a live-work and opportunity for over a dozen building owners facing the back to the river. Also, on behalf of all building owners in the B7 Riverfront District, we want to thank the city for the recent survey performed to update the floodplain map. We no longer will be required to get flood insurance for loans to improve our buildings.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to present tonight. I'm personally very grateful to so many of you and other local residents who have supported and continued to support my creative efforts by stopping in the shop and spreading the word about what we have to offer. Fifty percent of our revenue in a normal year is from our shows. This year is obviously far from normal. My lifetime of being an artist, along with over 20 years of trade show and art show experience, has allowed me to bring our lovely city front and center to many people. Exactly a year ago, A Touch of Glass hosted a bus trip, a bus trip of over 35 ladies. They were all jewelry artists from southeastern Wisconsin for a day trip to Wapaka. This event had been in the planning for over a year, and it was quite wonderful. They arrived around 11:00 AM, took jewelry-making classes at our studio, shopped, ate and drank their way up and down Main Street before loading onto their bus at 5:30, loaded down with the great many shopping bags, as well as some great stories of their meals, shopping finds, and how lovely they found our downtown. Some of the ladies are still talking about this. We were working on hosting a similar group from Minneapolis when the whole, when everything went crazy in the world, and will continue that work once things get back to normal. On a more individual level, we have had dozens of people that we have previously met at one of our many shows make their way to Wapaka to visit our shop, then hang around for lunch and check out other shops. During the summer of 2019, we hosted three groups of lovely young ladies from Camp Onaway. In total, over 60 gals came to learn to make a beaded bracelet project as well. Demonstration. A teaching background, I find my heart is always drawing attention, both adults and children, and I look forward to hosting. We had four Camp Onaway dates scheduled this past summer in 2020, but of course, we couldn't do those. Another local level item that we did that we're really excited about, we were honored to host a group of ladies from the Oxford home a couple weeks before Christmas. I taught them a bracelet design, and with the generous donations of a few of my customers, both ash and beads, the ladies were able to make some bracelets. They made one for themselves, and then were able to make a few for gifts. We were planning more of these, but of course, you know, we'll get back to this soon, hopefully. Speaking of COVID-19, early on, I recognized the funding need for our local community arts board. Since many of their fundraising events were forced to cancel, I came up with an idea to have protective masks created using images of my work. We sold all but three, and so just this past Thursday, we were really happy to be able to give the arts board a check for $200. And in these times of COVID, we were truly excited to be able to do that. Once the immediate distractions of COVID utilizing the Danes Hall and other event venues, these would include jewelry-making retreats, ladies' weekends, and even jewelry-specific supply and design shows, where we would host international teachers who specialize in various jewelry, jewelry-making methods and techniques.
As you can see, our presence as an artist and soon-to-be residents in the historic downtown district have benefited the city already by attracting people to shop downtown as well as to create policy changes with regards to economic development. There is more work needed to ensure that the B7 rezoning makes owning these buildings as functional and as profitable as possible. One such update to the language would be that owners are allowed to lease out their buildings as live-work spaces without needing to occupy them to do so. With regards to our vision for economic development in Wapaka, it is a privilege to work with senior economic development specialist Andy Dane and city administrator Erin Jensen in particular. Thank you for the opportunity to share this Arts and Culture Network update with you and for your ongoing support for the arts in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rick and Tammy, thank you. Any comments that council or staff would like to make?
Glad they're here.
Yeah.
Glad they're here.
We are too.
Thank you.
Thanks Lori. All right, so thank you, Rick and Tammy. Appreciate you taking time.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Obviously, you can hang in there if you want to. You can sign off if you want, but we just ask that you mute your microphone for the rest of the meeting or rest of your time on with us. But thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let's go to the department head reports then, and let's go to, let's start over on the left. Kathy? Kathy, you still on with us?
Yeah, I am. I'm just waiting. I'm a little delayed. But I do not have a report tonight in the packet, as I spent most of my time working on the financial bond reports to give to Baird and the bond council and putting together the CIP. So I will post a September report out on the web later on this week. Otherwise, I don't have anything.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. I know you've been working hard on a presentation tonight, so appreciate that, and we'll get to that later tonight. Anybody have any questions or comments for Kathy? All right, let's move on then. I won't forget you this time. Let's go to the library. And Peg?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Good evening, everyone. I just want to talk about what's going on at the library. We are on the radio twice a month with Josh, talking about everything that's happening, and you can catch us on the radio. One of our big goals this fall is to support families and students and teachers, and one of the ways we're doing that is that people can actually order a book pack where the librarians actually curate a small collection of items for your family or for your classroom, and then you can pick them up curbside. It's a convenience that people have come to really like, and if they are at all nervous about coming into a space, this is a way to do that without actually contacting. We continue to ask people to wear masks, use hand sanitizer, and we are keeping our numbers to a minimum in the building. You are able to come inside and use a computer. There are times when they're full, but for the most part, you can usually walk right in. And we have our study rooms available for up to two hours. Some of them have computers as well. Our conference room, we allow up to three people to use that, and please call for a reservation for that item. We also have things outside of the building, so story walks are still available in our trails in our park system. We have our sidewalk math. We can continue to update that. And then we have our online offerings. Of course, you can get ebooks and audiobooks through our website, but you can also find things like escape rooms and stories read by librarians. And there's a teen hangout space that you can kind of plan to come and join a book club or a game with our teen librarian Taylor. And so, a lot going on here. Our volume has increased. We're seeing more and more people coming into the library with those safety pieces in place, and we just thank the community for being supportive. And if you have a way that the library can help you be more successful in our community, we'd like to know about it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Peg. Anybody have any questions, comments for Peg? All right, let's go over to public works. Justin?
Thanks, Mayor. My update can be seen on page four and five of the update, or of the packet, excuse me. Just real quickly, in our wastewater site, we did receive our backup generator at Cover Bridge Lift Station. We did install that, the concrete pad and also the generator. We're just waiting for We Energies to hook up the gas and then Bauer to give us a little electrical out there. Leaf pickup's gonna be starting real soon next week. This year, we created a map of the city. We're gonna publish that, so we're gonna get a color-coded map posted on the webpage, the city webpage, and then also in all the utility bill stuffers with the newsletter. So, that's gonna be coming out soon. And of course, we always rotate the ward so that if you were the first last year, you'd be the last this year. Waterside, we're going to be doing our annual hydrant flushing. So, the schedule this year, September 22 through the 27th, the flushing will be done at 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And then on September 30 through October 4th, it's 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM. With this flushing, it's an annual maintenance thing where we try to just remove lime scale and just build up on the inside of the pipes, make sure everything's working right. So, it is normal to see changes in your water that you get from your faucet. It could be a different color, it could smell a little different. We ask that if you have some concerns, just to call the water department at 258-4423. You can try and run your water just a little extra on your own and see if it goes away. If not, we're certainly here to help and take care of those things with you. In the announcements, I was gonna announce I had five years, but you beat me to the punch, Brian. And then, other anniversaries, Tegan Knoller's got one year in September in our street department, and then Mark Nolenberg, our water superintendent, has 36 years at the end of this week.
Wow.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Justin. Any questions or comments for Justin? All right, let's move over to Andrew. Andrew Whitman, Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. We have started a few programs for our fall programs right now. Again, we're just trying to come up with creative and different things to do during this pandemic. So, one of the new things that started this week would be our esports league. So, we're kind of dabbling into esports and just trying to give an opportunity for kids to be out and doing something. So, that's been pretty successful. I think we have nine or 10 kids signed up for that. I watched them race some Mario Kart the other night, and they are all better than I am. So, we'll give them credit for that. We have disc golf starting up again soon, and we also have a virtual escape room out there. So, what that does is we utilize the riverage trail. People can sign up, and if you've done a virtual escape room or an escape room before, you have to figure out the clue, the answer. You come back, type it in, you get the next clue, and then you have to go back out and run around. So, you have a few weeks to do that as well. So, check that out if you're looking for something interesting to do and to get you outside. Our core plan is continuing on track. It should be done on time this year, even though with some of the delays and weird meetings. We're finishing up our surveys right now, and the boards that are up at City Hall and the rec center, so that'll be wrapping up soon, and we'll continue pushing forward that. The lake management plan, we're creating a survey right now with Ontara LLC that will be sent out to stakeholders and landowners on the lakes. That has to be approved by the DNR, so we're waiting for approval right now, and then we'll get, working on getting that sent out. Senior Center is doing well as well. All their classes are still sign-up only, but the classes have been full, even with some with waiting lists. They did start a new program this last week. It's called, it's a boxing program, and it's meant for people with disabilities. And they're just trying it and letting everyone sign up right now just to get used to it, but that is full, and they have a second class that's full based on a waiting list, and then they're already working on a third class. So, that's been pretty popular as well. So, definitely things are rolling down there. People are looking to be engaged, but to be safe as well. And those are most of the things we're working on.
Thanks, Andrew. Any comments or questions for Andrew?
Yes, Mayor, this is Scott. I have a question for Andrew.
Go for it, Scott.
Is there any thoughts on what the Halloween festivities or the trick-or-treating that will happen in October? Is there anything moving forward with that or not moving forward? I've been asked a few questions.
Sure. So, I can speak on our Halloween party, which we usually have here at the rec center. I would say we generally have between 200 or 300 people here for that. Obviously, that's not gonna happen that way this year. So, we are looking at trying something a little bit different at the end of October. So, October 30th, we're gonna try to do sort of a drive-through Halloween party out at Swan Park. So, people drive through different booths set up from local companies, or like the library usually participates. They can play or do something, some small activity, and get a small prize, and then move on to the next station. And then at the end of that, we're going to bring out a trailer with a screen or movie screen again, and do another drive-in style movie. The last one was very successful. I think we had about 50 cars there, and each car had two to four people in it, and the parking lot was packed. So, we're gonna try to do that again to give families an opportunity to just get out, do something, have some fun before Halloween, and watch a cool movie. So, that's what we're working towards for now, and we'll update that information in following meetings.
Thanks.
Yep.
All right, anybody else? Question for Andrew. All right, let's go to the police department. Chief Ozell?
Thanks, Mayor, council. The police commission met on August 11th. We again met virtually. During that meeting, we unfortunately had the resignation of one of our patrol sergeants, Brent Krieger. He has decided to go into the private sector and work there. With that being said, that opens up some opportunities for individuals within our department for a promotion, for a patrol sergeant promotion. So, we are in the process of that. That is also going to lead to another, we have to do a replacement for a patrol officer. So, we're in the process of accepting applications right now. They are due on Monday. So, we're looking forward to hopefully getting some nice qualified applicants. Dan Wasrud also celebrated a five-year anniversary last month back on August 10th. So, he's been with us five years, and one of the noteworthy things that we, that we did have that was a newly appointed position last year that the council approved was the drug officer. Tom Grant is doing an excellent job in that position. Within the last month, we did a couple different search warrants. There were some people that were taken into custody, and they were referred for charges of possession of meth, heroin, cocaine, marijuana, and some amphetamines. So, Tom continues to do a standout job in that position, and he's really making a difference in our community. One of the things that we did talk about at the last meeting were some capital items. And just to let everybody know that our radios did come in. All the officers have the new radios with the updated information that needed to be in them. Our old radios that, that we had, we gave those to the fire department. The fire department was in some need of some portable radios, so they got our radios, our lapel mics, the chargers, and also some extra batteries. So, we were able to help out another department with that. And then lastly, we did, obviously with school starting, school's a little bit different this year, obviously, with only a certain percentage of the students going. We do have two PSLOs this year. Ryan McCusky is at the middle school and learning center, and Wes Zuby is handling the high school and out to the chain. They're both doing a great job. It's a little different this year because, you know, they don't have as many people that are there. But, you know, if you go in the afternoons to pick up any of your kids or grandkids, I think you'll see a difference with Officer McCusky being there with directing traffic in the afternoons. We're able to make sure that we do, that we do have somebody that's there. And, sorry about that. And so, that's worked out really well for us this year, and that's all that I have unless there's something else. Any questions?
Thanks, Chief. Any questions or comments for Chief? All right, let's go to Sandy. All right, let's go to Sandy.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. My report can be found on pages twenty and twenty-one. Um, it's gonna be a short report. It's all about the election. As of, um, today, and I just checked here a few minutes ago, I have received nine hundred and forty absentee requests for absentee ballots. Just as to put it in perspective, in the twenty sixteen November election, we issued nine hundred and forty-eight total. So we are well on our way for over a thousand plus, um, ballots this time, and that's it. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Sandy. And, uh, let's go to our city adminis- administrator, Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Um, first on the list, Noah Lenke, we've been working with him on the, if you guys remember a couple months ago, the marketing for Waukaa, um, in the city and the area with the new branding principles. He has been shooting video for two months, uh, collecting everything he needs, and now he's gonna start editing. So, um, we expect to see kind of some sneak pre-peeks of what those marketing videos will look like in the next couple of months. Noah does a wonderful job, and I know I'm excited to see him, and I'm excited to share him with everyone on this meeting as soon as I get to see the first few. Uh, we have us, we're calling it the E D A C committee, Economic Development Advisory Committee. The first meeting that we'll have with that committee will be, um, and this is not a a formal city committee, but it's a group of people we've gotten together that are willing to help us set the framework for this business incentive program we're looking to have in the downtown. Uh, this is something that, uh, Mayor Smith, uh, myself and Andrew Dane are going to lead us through and in in the meeting on Monday, and and we've been working the last month or so on putting the framework together for this. Um, you know, this this program or these programs, I should say, again, come out of the the T I F changes that we made and the plan amendments, and really it dates back to the action steps that were outlaid in two thousands, this two thousand seventeen downtown plan, and we're looking to just take a step forward in 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 putting those actions in place. So we're excited to do that. We're envisioning two or three meetings, and then obviously you guys will see that as council members. Um, and we would love to get your guys' input eventually as well. Um, we just want to make sure it's a little more refined by the time it gets to you. Uh, we're still working on internet access to the Thomas Trail area. Again, this is one of our three residential areas that have capacity for growth, for new construction. Um, thanks to Mary Fair for her help and going door to door and, uh, making sure that people fill out surveys and get them back to Amherst Telephone Company, who has looked to gain some interest. I actually had some communication with them today, and it looks like they're they're needing about three more responses. So I'm gonna reach out to a few people, make sure those responses get in. And, uh, if they get those responses in a positive light, they'll move towards, uh, writing a grant to get in to that area and service that area. We've talked about how Waukaa online is fantastic for meeting the internet needs for a lot of areas in the city and in in the county, the rural areas, but this is just a tricky spot with the trees, and and it's just a tough place to get to. So, uh, we're excited to keep that conversation going with Amherst Telephone Company. Uh, continue to meet with people interested, uh, from commercial development standpoint, um, in all parts of the city, as well as continued residential, both single-family and multifamily development. So I can tell you, uh, multiple meetings per week, um, working through some things, trying to answer questions, be as helpful as we can. Uh, again, don't want to give too much before they actually have things in front of plan commission and and all of that. But, um, I am encouraged by the amount of, uh, back and forth we are having. So so that's a positive. Let's see here, we sold, the city sold, kind of notable, um, just today, the city sold the last property that we had in our possession. Um, we had a bunch in the Woodland Park Estates, when you guys know, went to Green Tree. We had some in the Buffalo Ridge, and now kind of had one single one on Tenth Street that a neighboring property owner has purchased. Uh, so that means, uh, as of today, uh, we are no longer in possession of city lots, uh, that we're looking to sell. A zoning code rewrite, as you all know, uh, we've been going through that. And as plan commissioners on this call know, you've had a lot of meetings, six or seven. Um, Mayor Smith kind of jokingly said today, you might be looking for new plan commissioners with all the meetings we've put them through here recently. So I can appreciate all the time you guys have given. Uh, we've kind of got to the end of the plan commission part of that process with the zoning code rewrite, and we have, we're looking to move it to a public hearing, uh, on October twentieth. That's the second council meeting of the month. Uh, so we look forward to having that public hearing on the new zoning code, and we'd be looking at repealing, um, repealing the old zoning court ordinance and, um, taking action on the new one, eventually after a couple readings. Greg, the grant writer, started, uh, on September first. We've been working with him on prioritizing projects. I want to thank all of our department heads for putting together their wish lists, and we've gotten that in front of them, and he's doing research, and we'll be getting back to myself, Terry, and Ron from the Chamber in the School District on what he finds. Um, so we'll continue that conversation. Shared revenue, um, this thing, uh, this is so, this is really, really positive news that we heard today, that Kathy shared with me this morning. Um, you know, we were looking at, they said anywhere up to thirty percent shared revenue cuts, which for us could have been two hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars. Just heard this morning that we're only looking at a nine thousand dollar cut for this year for shared revenues. So that is incredibly positive news. The only thing we're waiting to hear on now is transportation aids. Um, again, we we we're not exactly sure what to expect with that. Uh, the talk up until this point was that the shared revenue was a little more of a concern. Uh, but we'll keep you updated on those transportation aids. But that was incredibly positive news for Tuesday when we walked in, so that was a plus. Um, Resident Appreciation Day, October seventeenth, you guys have seen that, and I appreciate your guys' willingness and want to give back to our community. I think it's awesome that council members are wanting to do that. Um, and all elected officials, Mayor Smith, um, department heads, if they're able to, will join that day, nine to noon, teaming up with high school kids and, um, raking people's lawns. We already have six people signed up, so that's a plus. Uh, we have, uh, bids coming in on Friday, uh, at two o'clock, and that's for our, uh, assessor services for two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two. So I'm looking forward to opening those bids, and you guys will see something in front of you fairly soon on that. Um, in addition to that, we're also looking at getting prices for exterior revals for the entire city. So we'll be bringing forward information soon. And then, uh, right now, we're moving into the personnel slash operational portion of our budgets. Um, obviously, capital tonight at the committee of the whole, uh, department heads have done an awesome job working through that for the past month. Uh, and then Kathy will be getting them their department head or their department worksheets middle of this week, and they'll start chipping away at the operational budget. So, um, and when I say chipping away, I I don't mean that figuratively. I mean, working on it. So, um, a big thanks to Kathy and all the department heads for that in advance. But, I know I got a little long-winded there, Mayor Smith. That's, uh, all I have, but be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thanks, Aaron. Uh, anybody have any questions or comments for Aaron? You know, I, uh, it is good news that the shared revenue is only going down by nine thousand dollars, but I I I'm thinking that whoever came up with the, it was gonna be reduced by thirty percent has made it a lot easier for us to handle a nine percent decrease, uh, knowing that it could have been thirty percent. I I think I might have to use that in the future when we're talking about cuts.
Scare tactic.
Yeah. So, good. Uh, let's go on to unfinished business. We have, uh, ordinance number zero eight twenty twenty. This is an ordinance repealing, uh, and recreating chapter thirteen point zero two three, uh, the sewer use regulations of the city Waukaa municipal code. And this is a second reading, so Justin, just explain to us again what we're doing here and and whether you received any comments or not.
Absolutely, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, I did not receive any comments on this change or alteration of the current sewer use regulation. Um, again, this is just, uh, editing, uh, some of those sections within, uh, chapter thirteen, which is our sewer use ordinance. Uh, we had several minor changes with the definitions. Uh, we updated or we thought clarified a number of those definitions, which are very early on, uh, in that in within that chapter, uh, which are referenced later on in the section. Um, a lot of it had to do with the high-strength waste. As you know, the, you know, the higher strength the waste is, the more it takes for us to treat it, more cost. So if we can control that before it gets to us, obviously, we can control the cost. Um, we had a change to the, um, the the definition or use of a private sewer line, uh, that we had just clarified. So basically, that change was a private lateral is defined as, um, the the pipe that leads from a house out to the entire main or to the main, the maintenance of that pipe is on the private property owner. Um, if there was a failure, the failure, the responsibility that failure depends on where that pipe is in relation to the property line. So that has never changed, but we just clarified that within the ordinance because in the past, it does come up, uh, once in a while of who who's responsible for what. And then the big change was within our, uh, amalgam management, uh, especially within the dental offices. Uh, hit on that quite a bit last time, um, as we have had issues, uh, with mercury in our wastewater, um, in our plant. I mean, it treats it, uh, but our way of treating is basically, uh, sending that mercury to our sludge tank, which is then land-applied, um, out on farm fields. So there's really a not a good way of taking care of mercury, um, in the environment. So the best way is just to prevent it, uh, from the source, which is the sewer users. So, um, as the mayor mentioned, this is the second reading. Uh, upon approval tonight, it will be published in next Thursday's newspaper, and that's when all these changes will take into effect.
Anybody have any questions?
This is Alan, motion to approve.
This is Lori, second.
Okay, we had, uh, motion by Alan Kealan, second by Lori Chestnut to approve ordinance number zero eight twenty twenty. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote, so I'll have Sandy take the roll.
Steve Hackett.
Sorry, go. Hey, uh, Justin, can you mute your mic once? You are, okay. Sandy, can you start over? I can't hear you.
I can't. Well, I asked for Steve Hackett. I'm not sure if he's on yet.
Okay. Looks like you gotta get your face closer to your microphone there, wherever it is, so.
Me?
Yep, you.
Okay.
I don't, I haven't seen Steve Hackett's name anywhere on here, so.
Okay. All right, Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Kealan.
Aye.
Scott Porczewski.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Neal.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, Justin, thank you. Uh, next up, we have, uh, license report number fifteen twelve. This is the bartender's license here, operator's license. So, again, um, I don't have that page up. What's the asterisk for again? I forgot. I can't.
Any money's owed.
So she owes some money?
She did. She's been in and paid.
Okay, so everybody on this list is good.
Right.
All right, so we need a motion to approve.
This is Lori.
Mary, motion to approve.
Yeah, I heard them. Okay, I got a motion by Lori Chestnut, second by, uh, Dave Peterson to approve the license report fifteen twelve. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. All right, uh, next, we're going to, uh, I have nothing tonight for communications recommendations of the mayor, because we're, we're gonna move on. The only, I guess the only thing I am gonna make sure, just because we're done with this meeting doesn't mean council and staff, you're done for the night. So we'll shut this one off, and then we'll go to the committee of the whole meeting. So we need a motion to adjourn, Paul Hagan.
Motion to adjourn. Alan, second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Kealan, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carried. Uh, we're adjourned at, uh, six forty-eight P M. We'll go ahead and start the committee of the whole meeting. The Brewers are down one-nothing, by the way, in the first. Uh, I call this meeting to order. We have an agenda in your packet. Uh, you you have that, uh, the documentation that Kathy has sent out, uh, uh, and that was a separate, uh, line in the, under the community of the whole, under the city's website. So hopefully you downloaded both of those or opened both of those. Um, so we just need a motion to approve the agenda.
So, motion, yes.
Uh, motion by Mary Fair.
Second by Lori.
Second by Lori Chestnut to approve the agenda as presented. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. So capital improvement plan development, uh, Aaron, do you want to set this up, or should I just turn it over to Kathy?
Um, yeah, I can just kind of explain what it will look like tonight. Kathy's gonna take us through, um, kind of, we're gonna start at the end and work backwards. She's gonna take us through the, uh, the borrow, you kind of rehash some things we've already been through, look at the forecast, uh, per Baird's documents. Um, I can say that, uh, I think, feel like we're in a pretty good spot as far as borrowing and getting our capital projects done. Um, and then our, as, when she wraps up with that, our department heads are gonna go through their list. They're not gonna touch on the two thousand twenty stuff, even though we're borrowing for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, because most of that has already been approved through city council. Um, they will touch on their two thousand twenty-one projects. Um, and obviously, if there's any questions, uh, feel free to ask. Um, again, this is not getting voted on tonight or anything, but, uh, we do hope to share, uh, information with you on as much as possible. And and with that, I'll turn it in over to Kathy, and Kathy, I'll pull up your report, I assume?
Yeah, that would be be great. Um, I did post it, um, again, I guess I didn't have it posted last night. Um, I was reworking remotely, but I did get it posted, um, this morning, uh, on the website and did have, uh, paper copies available for council members to, um, pick up in the clerk's office. Um, the C I P plan, uh, is just, uh, what it is. It is a five-year plan that we're looking at, um, the different projects, uh, to either use, um, borrowed funds or other financing sources. I did, um, have some background for anybody who looks at a C I P, uh, what, uh, some of the terminology is and, uh, how the city goes about, um, adopting, uh, uh, the plan, uh, every year. So then, um, I did provide the projects and funding sources by department, and this is the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. Um, and like Aaron said, we're not gonna go over the twenty twenty stuff, um, but, um, it's there for placeholding and for reference for, um, council and the, excuse me, and the public. Um, the twenty twenty-one, uh, projects, um, again, uh, the biggest project that we have for twenty twenty-one is, um, Main Street reconstruction. So that takes up, uh, quite a bit of the capacity, um, but it does go each each department, uh, what their, um, projects are going into the future. So you can see that. And then I've also added, uh, projects by funding source, and this is the one that I picked out, just the, uh, projects that we're going to be using. Um, the geo bonds, um, we're looking at four million dollars of, uh, capital, uh, borrow this year uh, to finance both the twenty twenty and twenty-one projects. Um, we're kind of close. It's like, um, three point nine eight five. So it's fifteen thousand and some change. thousand and some change, uh, that we're gonna be borrowing for. Um, again, these are the projects that, uh, we're looking at, uh, financing. Uh, there has been a change. Uh, normally, we do some of this, uh, shorter-term projects, uh, using the line of credit that we have at Farmer State Bank that, uh, is at four percent. So what we're doing is, uh, part of, um, the change for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one is saving, uh, three percent interest and, uh, borrowing for, uh, the about three hundred thousand dollars worth of projects, um, that would normally come under the short-term, uh, financing plan and, um, taking advantage of the lower interest rates. Those projects will be, uh, part of the, um, principal payoff, uh, within the first two years, uh, when we look at the financing plan from Baird. Um, and then, uh, for anybody, I can stop and, and if anybody has any questions, um, answer them now, uh, otherwise I'll keep going.
You know, uh, so, thank you Kathy, I forgot to mention this. Uh, so, you know, in your bar on the, on the teams thing, there's that place where you can ask a question. It's, uh, basically, if you wanna ask a question, just hit that hand thing and then, then we'll, and Kathy, if you could keep an eye on that and then just, uh, work it that way, or else if, if, uh, Aaron, if you see somebody raise their hand, then, uh, we can work it that way.
Um, like I, it's head sad is, is I've broken down the, the capital plan and showing that, um, the different projects each of the department i- is looking for, um, uh, but the, the biggest thing that I'm looking at is uh, on the next page, Aaron, is the financial advisor projection that we received from Baird. Um, we're probably looking more at, um, a, a one point three percent, um, interest rate on this four million dollar note, um, versus what, um, they're projecting, um, and it's anybody's guess, um, what the future's gonna be, but, um, a possibly a four or four and a half percent, uh, interest rate. So, um, to take that, uh, interest rate risk and buy, and, and borrow for, um, projects that we can afford, as you can see on the right-hand side, um, we're looking at, uh, a very, uh, stable, uh, debt service mill rate, uh, based on, uh, all of our projections. So I, you know, uh, I'm looking at more, uh, what can we afford, but also, um, what can we get done? Um, and still be conservative, uh, with what we have, what we have. Um, if we have a project that we're borrowing for, or, um, the bids come in lower than what our estimate is, um, that might, um, be able to shift some of that debt service we could need from twenty-two, uh, and use some of the bond proceeds as we have two years uh, to use bond proceeds, uh, under the law. Um, so it's, um, like everybody else, it's, it's, uh, cheap money right now. Uh, we're in a good financial position that, uh, we can, we can do the projects that we need to do to, um, keep the city moving forward. Um, then I've provided our, uh, estimate on the next page of the debt service fund budget, uh, looking at, um, two thousand and eighteen and nineteen, um, uh, you know, if you can kinda get into that, Aaron. Um, but, um, again, I'm looking at a very stable, uh, debt service, um, um, tax levy, uh, which is the transfer and from the general fund, because the general fund collects the taxes. Uh, we do have estimated in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two of having, uh, TIF three and six, uh, pay back the debt service fund for, um, debt service levy that, uh, they were unable to, uh, generate increments. So the taxpayers, uh, paid for some of the TIF debt and because those two TIFs now are in a good financial position, we're able to pay back the debt service fund. And we're, we've done that also with TIF five and, and TIF seven, um, to pay back some of the increment that they, um, were unable to generate to pay their debt. Uh, this will allow us with that about one and a half million to either apply it to debt service, um, or to, um, lower the amount that we're going to borrow, uh, especially in twenty twenty-three. We're, we're looking at a six and a half million dollar borrow for the Public Works Building. Um, but I've put in, um, the, um, numbers in a different format that Baird has, uh, showing the interest and prin- principal for each of the uh, issues out there. And if you go down to the bottom, Aaron, on the, the page, um, you can see it does have an, a, a good cash, uh, balance, um, that can be applied, like I said, to either lower the debt uh, or to lower the levy, or pay off, uh, additional debt, depending on interest rates, uh, and being able to refinance if we have to. Um, so there's all these, um, different scenarios. Um, with that, uh, the next chart I have for everyone is the, um, is the levy, showing the, um, amounts that, um, the levy is made up of. And as you can see, most of it is operation, um, and the library, and a little bit of trans, transit and the uh, airport. And, uh, I didn't put in, but it's the new one, is the, um, youth programs, uh, that we split off of the operating budget, but the dark blue is definitely, um, our portion of our levy that is, uh, for debt service. And it's not um, more than half of our, our levy, uh, right now. So I, I'm, I'm very confident, coming from thirteen to where we are possibly in twenty twenty, showing you that we don't have, uh, that much of, uh, a levy, uh, supported by, um, uh, debts for debt service. Um, otherwise, we can start now, um, going over, uh, each of the departments, giving a, a quick uh, runover of, uh, the projects, uh, that they're looking. Each one of these projects have, uh, a description, uh, the justification from the department as to why they, uh, feel that's needed and, uh, where the, um, funding i- is coming. So, um, each of these projects can be, um, um, asked, uh, for more information from each of the department heads, uh, whoever's, uh, the contact on each one of these, uh, to be able to, uh, answer any other questions for, uh, anybody. But Aaron, are you gonna, um, take, uh, Beth's? I don't think she.
Uh, if I can get my. There we go. Yeah, Kathy, I will be happy to take Beth's in the airport here. So I'll explain this first one. Uh, tea hanger, storage building, uh, looking, Beth's looking at doing some construction of some tea hangers. Uh, she has a waiting list right now of, well, over ten people looking to get into tea hangers and, uh, those tea hangers can, uh, produce revenue for the airport each year. As you can see here, we're looking at, it would, well, I guess if we constructed eight additional hangers, we'd bring in about eleven thousand two hundred dollars per year more than we're bringing in right now. The thing that would make this make sense is if the B O A does fund it at ninety-ten, we would be, um, responsible for ten percent of that or thirty thousand. If that was the case, we would, uh, pay for the construction before the three-year mark. Um, we are waiting to hear on some details from the B O A and our contact, Andy Trimble. And there's a meeting set up, excuse me, for tomorrow, uh, as there's been some things in flux. Covid has put them behind on some things. Um, and they, it hasn't been ex- extremely clear yet on, uh, when some of their matching funds would be able to come in on a number of projects. So, right now, we have it slotted in there as being prepared to cover our ten percent of that. So that's kinda, that's a little bit on that. Uh, should have another, fuel farm, that was already taken care of, so I'm not, I'm gonna gloss over that. That was done this past year. Um, did I miss one? Uh, and then replace, I'm sorry, I missed, I went right over that one. Replace snow removal equipment at the airport. This is the only other one to speak of tonight. Uh, they have been working through some maintenance problems with some of their snow removal equipment for the last few years. Um, they were pretty confident, Beth was confident that we would get a match to cover and get new snow removal equipment this year before the two thousand twenty winter. Um, unfortunately, uh, this is one of those things in flux and, and we're not sure, we're gonna get more information tomorrow, but we wanna be prepared to cover our cost of that. Again, uh, ninety-ten, um, twenty thousand would be our cost. The way this works is the B O A actually purchases the big equipment, the large equipment, and then we purchase the equipment from them for the ten percent match. Um, so that, what we've heard is this could get pushed off to two thousand twenty-two, possibly, two thousand twenty-one. Um, so that we're gonna hear more about that. But as Kathy explained, with interest rates being low now, uh, it just makes sense to be prepared to borrow for that now, knowing we can spend it in any of those times. So, uh, that's a little bit on, uh, I think that's it for the airport. So, um, let's see here. I'm just gonna kinda, I'll kinda lead through here. If I see things that I know haven't been done, I'll, then I'll turn it over to the appropriate department head. Um, election equipment taken care of. Roof replacement taken care of. Red. This would be one, um, that I believe, Justin, you could touch on?
Yes, uh, this is our air handling unit within, um, city hall. This, the big, the big old vents that are outside the building are controlled by compressors. Uh, so what this project would do would get rid of that compressor. We'd move to digital controls. Um, it's kind of an inefficient system, ran some conservative numbers, and we would see a, uh, payback on our energy savings, uh, in about twelve years. Um, the, the big issue is that when the air conditioner in the heater wants to run is during the peak period. So our rates during those peak periods are very high, and that's the reason why we wanna get to do this upgrade.
Thank you, Justin. And I'm trying to keep an eye kind of on two screens here, guys. So if I don't see a hand to go up or that feature, please feel free to yell out, uh, to, or someone else can help me out. So next one is mine, uh, community development software upgrade. Uh, we have been using, um, a software system that hasn't been very user-friendly for our staff, and it hasn't been very user-friendly for our, uh, our customers. And we've been looking at upgrading from a building inspection standpoint, help with some efficiencies in the office. And as we started looking at demos, we realized that, uh, we can possibly tie in a lot of other city hall things. And we're gonna have a meeting a week from now, or a week from Thursday to discuss needs, priorities, wants, all of that. And we're gonna sit in on some demos. Right now, kind of the, the upper echelon of what we're looking at for one-time expenses, that first year, uh, is sixteen thousand dollars. Um, so we have that budgeted as we look to move in the direction of just gaining efficiencies and customer-friendly, um, services. And, and this kinda, actually, we do know that it, there is a possibility that with this type of project allowing people to get their services at home, it is possible that Co- uh, some of the cares money could go towards something like this as well. So we're looking into that. But it's a little bit on the, the software.
Josh, you wanna speak computer replacement?
Um, yeah, so each year we have ten thousand dollars budgeted to replace just our standard office computers around our different city departments. And, uh, for next year, we're looking at doing all the office computers at the police department. Um, in general, our computers spend about five years in one location before they get replaced. And then kind of after that five years, they end up getting rotated to a secondary use, uh, such as time clock computers at the parks or other computers we have around the city that are used for secondary uses. So, um, about every five years they get replaced. Next year is the police department.
Thank you, Josh. Keep on rolling.
All right, the other, uh, the other big I T project for next year is we have two main physical servers that house all the city's different virtual servers. Um, industry standard best practice is to replace those every five years. The warranty on each of those servers is for five years. And then, um, keeping our software, our server software updated, um, kind of five years is where everything, uh, inches out that we should look at replacing these. So next year, we're looking at replacing one of the two servers, and this one primarily houses, uh, non-law enforcement items, a lot of our city hall stuff and some generic, uh, general, uh, systems that we have. Um, so we'd replace the server hardware along with getting all of our software licensing up to date. We've got some servers still running, Windows Server twenty-twelve, which by next year is gonna be nine years old and pretty outdated in terms of software. This just keeps us on update, reliable hardware, up-to-date software to help, uh, mitigate any potential viruses or other issues with systems. Um, and kind of the big cost next year is we have some database SQL server licensing that needs to get uh, purchased and updated. And that's kind of one huge cost, um, tied into next year's project.
Josh, did you wanna talk on the meeting tech upgrades?
Yeah, um, so a couple of years ago, we did have some money in capital to start upgrading our A V technology in the city council chambers. And if I recall, some of that, uh, funding got removed just because we were in another tight year. Other projects took priority. And if you recall, that was the year that we replaced the microphones in the city council chambers. Um, the rest of the A V equipment in there is still the original equipment. I think possibly from when that room got remodeled, it's maybe original with this building. I'm not sure, but it's uh, pretty outdated. I'd like to get the rest of that replaced, cause it's showing its age. The other thing now that we're doing virtual meetings, hybrid meetings, is I'm having issues getting that old equipment to interface with modern technology. So we've had some hybrid meetings where some of the audio is just not working, uh, properly. So this is to kinda finish up a project that we had a couple of years ago that wasn't able to, uh, be fully complete. So it's getting some, you know, the rest of the audio and some video stuff just replaced and up to date, so we can get that room in a really good shape, cause I think even post-Covid, we're still gonna be doing a lot of hybrid stuff. We see that it works out really well. So that's what this is for. Another one here, um, most of our council members have laptops that are over nine years old at this point. That's pretty good lifespan that we've gotten out of them and they still work okay. Um, looking to replace, kinda replace those, but, uh, kinda change directions a little bit. Um, with the technology everyone has nowadays, most people have a smartphone, a laptop, maybe a tablet, some sort of device at home that maybe purchasing replacement laptops to send home doesn't make, uh, as much sense as it used to. But we've got all of our other committees that, uh, meet in the council chambers that don't have access to the same technology. So we've got city council that has devices. We've got all of our other committees that are still utilizing paper for meetings. So we're looking to get some sort of tablet, probably an iPad, uh, placed at each desk in the council chambers to kind of replace these laptops or get updated technology. And then all of our, uh, users of that room, whether it's park and rack or library, um, or some of the other committees can also have access to technology for our meetings. So we're looking at getting updated devices that would stay stationary in that room.
All right, thank you, Josh. I think we're through most of the IT stuff, if not all of it. This one, Parks, Swan Park's buildings and roofing and siding was done this past year. As was the Boyer Park sprinkler system. Andrew, I'll let you touch base on the next one.
All right, thanks, Aaron. So yeah, we're looking at our Swamp Park playground again. Over the past few years, we've had a lot of safety and equipment issues out there on this very heavily used playground. Has created a strain on our operational budget. We've had to take equipment off of there that just wasn't able to be replaced money-wise or financially-wise. So what this is, this is a proposal to revamp the whole area out there where the playground is in partnership with the Friends of Opaquaparks. Some of the highlights of the proposal would be a rubberized playground surface, age-specific areas, upgraded ADA accessibility opportunities. And some of that comes from the rubberized playground, but also just making sure that we're being inclusive when we're looking at the different structures that we would like to put in here. And then of course, the big item on there would be a splash pad for the community on there as well. So there's a lot of benefits to a project like this. We've talked earlier about, you know, all the homes going in out there and all the additional housing and just trying to create a community that people want to live in and come to. I think this definitely goes along with those lines. So with Friends of Opaquaparks helping by supplementing this proposed project and all the benefits to the community, we feel like this would be a great time to upgrade that area out there.
Looks like it's formatted, size is a little different. Let me just zoom out a little bit.
Aaron, Scott Perchetti has his hand up.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, I'm just curious, Andrew, can you expand on some of your, I got that paper copy here and you talked about, or they talking here about the project is kind of contingent on the fundraising is, is, can you expand on what that's going to mean? Or will it push the project back? Or are we going to take some of that 700 and start it or what?
Yeah, those are good questions. So right now, the proposal and working with Friends of Opaquaparks is that, you know, we would borrow for 50% of the project and they would work to fundraise the other 50%. You know, through some initial discussions, if, if they're not able to meet that amount or that request, then we, you know, we may have to pare back certain things within the project. But that's really, you know, what they've committed to, what they're excited to try to do for the community. And, you know, I think this can gain a lot of momentum and, and the community can support something like this. So we look forward to working with Friends of Opaquaparks to, to hopefully try to make this happen.
I think you're muted.
Yeah, he's still talking. You're on mute.
Does that mean we'd start something no matter what the fundraising would be in '21 then with our portion of some? We're going to start construction on it then?
That's a good question. I know Aaron and Kathy and I have talked about timing and, and dates for that. So I don't know if they want to talk about that a little bit more.
Yeah, I'd be happy to step in there. Scott, yeah, good questions. We talked about this and, and we talked about it being really a 50-50 matching thing, right? So we would not start construction until we kind of knew where the Friends of Opaquaparks were at. So again, I think this goes into borrowing at that 1.3%. We know that, let's just say, and we don't expect this at all, but let's just say that, you know, they weren't able to hit their, anywhere near a match and we weren't able to go forward with it. It's not like we couldn't use that money on other projects. That's not our intent, but you, you can still spend it on the other things moving forward that maybe are currently in the 2022 budget. So that's how that looked.
All right, thanks.
Yep. All right. I'll kind of keep scrolling.
All right. I think that's me again, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so the next one on there is looking at 415 School Street. So as you remember, 415 School Street is where HFH was, right next door to us here at the rec center. Until earlier this year, that building is owned by the city and I believe their lease is up at, at the end of the year. So conversations have started about how to best utilize that building to the, address the needs of the community. And this request is, is essentially a placeholder for work that may need to be done to that building for potential uses. We do have one initial proposal that this was kind of created based on that proposal as far as financial, how much we're asking for. But the conversations will continue over the upcoming months on this building and potential uses. And again, we want to make sure that we use it in a way that best utilizes the needs of the city and the needs of the community members.
All right, Andrew, I think we're still up with you.
All right, I believe the last one I got tonight then would be bike and pedestrian planning. So I know this plan has been talked about for many years. It's been brought forward in the past before I was the director here for Parks and Rec. And so this plan would essentially be a collaboration between Aaron, Justin and myself. We feel that all three departments could use this and work together to implement the findings. This amount is based on a proposal from East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. We would all work together, the three of us, to get this plan put together. You know, Justin and Aaron, if they want to speak on it, they can, but Justin could use it when building, you know, we're doing road projects. I could do it as far as looking at our trails and connections and how we connect to the county and the other communities to draw people into our community. And then Aaron can use it from a economic standpoint as well. So that's what that proposal is for and it kind of encapsulates the three departments.
Well, can you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you pretty much hit it.
Sounds good. I would agree. I don't think I have anything to add from my standpoint. All right, chief, looks like we're on to you. Thank you, Andrew. Replace backup boiler, I think we, that's taken care of. Go over that. I'll let you talk on this, chief.
All right, the Beast Evidence Software. Right now, we're currently, we have to handwrite all our evidence that go on PI sheets. So there's a lot of advantages of going to the Beast. It cuts, cuts out a lot of duplicate work versus us just handwriting, then entering it into the computer. So the logging of the evidence in a property with the Beast stores it immediately in the evidence software. It actually prints out corresponding labels. And then this puts the officers back in service at a faster rate. So they can put that right on the evidence bags, bar scan it and it goes into the evidence room. A huge advantage to that is that the Wisconsin State Crime Lab also uses the Beast. So when we take a piece of evidence out of our, out of the evidence room, we barcode it and that gets transferred to the state crime, the crime lab. And once they get it, they barcode it back in and it actually physically tracks the location of the evidence. Just kind of like how you can track if you look at, he orders something online from, maybe Amazon or someplace else that you can track. We can do that with this, with the, with the software. Our current record system, obviously, we maintain a separate evidence table to properly track the evidence items on a paper sheet. And we would be able to eliminate that. And it also makes it easier for us when we do our IBR reporting. That's a information-based reporting that we have to do with the government. It's just a lot quicker. So just looking at that, for us to get into that system, just the startup cost with the, includes the, the desktop, the monitor and everything and the license is $10,522. So it's something that's going to make us more efficient and it's going to really assist us with that. Police squads. Few years ago, we decided that we needed to rotate our squads out faster. We were getting really nickelled and dimed with a lot of maintenance. And we can actually look at our budget last year and this year and we can see the savings that we are that we're getting rid of our cars on a four-year rotation. So last year, we purchased two squads. This year is the even number year. Ewald, from the way it sounds, they have the state bid again. So we'll be looking at vehicles at Ewald, we'll just be looking at replacing one squad. And that comes in at $64,500. And last year, we spent roughly $62,000 on, on each of the vehicles. And then lastly is the police server. The server that we have now, right now, in, or in 2021 will be six, will be six years old. We have a lot of sensitive information that we have to keep on it as for criminal cases and for evidence, just to make sure that it's up to date and that it's reliable. And these typically servers last for about five years. And obviously as computers age, they get more prone to failures, which will cost money and it'll also cost downtime and possibly loss of data. So that's something I've been working hand-in-hand with Josh with. That Josh really keeps us up to date as to where we need to be and how we need to maintain our computers and our software. So hats off to Josh for keeping us up to date with everything versus everything crashing. So I think that's all that I have here.
Awesome, thanks, chief. All right, Justin, we are in your department.
Oh yeah, so we have a pickup truck next year, truck 118. This truck has a hole in the floor, so we think it's time to phase it out. I think that's a pretty good explanation. The big one, the public works garage next year. And in '22, we have budgeted for the planning and designing of the new build. And of course, in '23 is the big build. So just getting that project kicked off starting next year. And as you can see, the funds are just set aside to make this whole thing possible. A front-end loader, we need an, an extra one now that we had to build our own salt shed. We'd like to have a third front-end loader. Basically, the plan is to take our oldest one that we have now and delegate it to just salt duties and some other things during the summertime and purchase a lightly-used one for the other operations, mainly snow removal and gravel movement and the such. So that is on there for that. And again, shooting for a lightly-used front-end loader. Ten-year dumper, this actually, next year is a, basically a one-ton truck. So $65,000 for our one-ton flatbed truck. We use a lot for crack sealing, pothole, hauling materials. It's a 99 GMC, pretty old. It's got a lot of things that are just failing on it. The 10-yard dumper, which is our bigger truck, isn't till '22. And as you can see, the dollar amounts are reflected in the size of the vehicles we need. Main Street, not much more to say on that. Getting ready for the construction next year, which we anticipate starting in March. So you can see the budget of what we have aside for roadway and for the utilities. Expected borrow versus other funds with that as well. Main Street amenities, Aaron, can you touch on this one?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is something we kind of added back into the base. This is separate from the base of the Main Street project that Justin just touched on. We, we just, we've been having conversations as a part of it. We're calling it the Downtown Placemaking Advisory Group. And Andrew Dane is helping us lead through that. We're talking about some of those things that were pared out at one point of the project. Is there a way to get donations to get them back in? And as we're going through that, notice that trash receptacles and benches, those are the two big ones, were cut out. You know, with a brand-new project, we just feel like it's appropriate to get those back in. We don't want to put kind of old trash receptacles and things that we've been using for X amount of years on a brand-new project and brand-new infrastructure. So we, in looking at the borrow, we feel like we can do that. And that's reflected here. You'll see 50, 70,000, $75,000 total. $25,000 is a private donation that is going to a specific thing that we'll talk about in upcoming months. And then 50,000 would be for those trash receptacles and benches. That's what you see there.
Granite Street, not much to say on there. That's under construction. We'll have that done by the end of the year. Harrison and High Street, this project, their next road after Main Street, it is the four blocks north of Fulton on Harrison and then the four to five blocks south of Fulton on High Street. Very similar to Lake and Granite, it's pretty much the whole kit and caboodle. We have road, curb, sidewalk, water main, sanitary, lead and undersized mains. So it's going to be another doozy of a project, but it's all needed. So the design of that's going to start next year. Scott, you have a question?
Yeah, Justin, I was wondering what the circumstance was why we didn't move Fulton Street ahead of this project, at least the High Street part. I've seen as Fulton is a, is down next year. So I was wondering why we, what's the criteria there?
The, the need of basically the, all the infrastructure, I guess, combined. High and Harrison has four-inch water main, which we're trying to upsize. It has lead goosenecks. The pavement is also very poor. I mean, I know Fulton Street has, pavement is getting there. It's starting to be marginal, I would say. But we determined that High and Harrison has basically worse pavement and much worse condition as far as utilities. Fulton Street, at this point, we're not anticipating replacing any water main and hopefully not sanitary either, but we still have to do some investigation on that.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. I don't know anything with the taxi van.
Kathy, I'll let you touch on the taxi.
All right, we've been approved for a, a taxi replacement of our rear loading vans. Again, this is a federal grant that we get to replace our vehicles. So the dollar amount, keeping our, us, equipment in really good shape to transport our residents is, is necessary. We did get approved for the '21, we were, grant, we were one of four in the state. uh in the state for the rural um transit systems to to get the grant. So this will probably not be the King bus vehicle. Uh, instead, we're probably going to be looking at uh another uh rear loading um minivan uh with a handicap accessible lift, uh, because we're in continual um talks with the King as to providing them services and they're looking at reducing. So um, we do have a a bus that can handle King uh if necessary. But um, I think uh trying to get more of the residential um ridership going um is probably where we're going to be looking for those minivans with the handicap accessible lifts uh instead. And they're cheaper than a bus.
Back to Justin.
So wastewater plant, our D C S distributed control system, this is a big project. Uh, description sums it up pretty well. So next year, we're gonna start with a preliminary study. All things go well, we're gonna go into design twenty two and then finally twenty three implement. Basically, D C S is how we control the plant, is our automated system. Uh, we use it every day to control and give us information, it's very important. Right now, the guys are using like these touchscreens that are probably equivalent of like an eight bit uh system. So it's time for an upgrade, um, and it's very, very important to our plant. Blower's underway right now, no need to talk about that anymore, we're expecting that to be finished by the end of the year. Eight thousand digester rehab is a new project next year, so we have two digesters. Uh, eight thousand is our older of the two. Um, it hasn't seen much um maintenance or rehab in quite some time. Uh, and we still use it quite often, uh, so we'd like to keep this building, this tank moving or I guess just maintain so we can continue to use it. Uh, it really helps us on the sludge side, you know, and if we can control our sludge, uh, we control our expenses. Clarifier rehab, that is underway right now with two tanks. And next year, we're looking to do the same exact thing on the other two tanks. That's already nearly complete. Uh, so the water department is on the capital plan, pretty much what's listed in here. Uh, just high dollar maintenance items. We have our meter replacement, our hydrant painting, our leak location, our water tower inspection and our cross control, cross connection control program. Those are all the things that are listed in here. Like I said, all high dollar maintenance, they show up in our capital plan. The big, big dollar amounts for the water department come within the road projects where we're replacing mains and laterals. So that's Granite Street, Main Street, High and Harrison. So on each one of those projects, we're spending upwards of two hundred to four fifty on Main Street for replacing water mains. And those are not as apparent in this uh packet because they're just the water costs are just within those road projects, they don't really show up like this, like these ones do.
I think that might be true, hold on a sec here.
Oh, Scott had his question, his his hand up, it it looks like it's gone now, but I don't know, Scott, do you still have a question?
No, I that was the one for Justin on the streets, he answered it.
Okay.
I think that's it, guys, um, if I think everything else is two thousand twenty two or we've we've kind of been over it. Department heads, am I missing anybody or did I miss a project uh that you guys realize I'm missing? I'll take that as a no.
I I did add the twenty two projects um for everyone that uh if if it came to the point where we uh may need to uh slot in a twenty two project, um, that information is also available. Um, and it and it could be, there's a lot of different um projects out there. Um, and like I said, between um the bids, estimates and the bids coming in, um, it's uh what we're looking at for the different projects. So anybody has any questions? Again, this was just for discussion, uh, there is no action required of the council. Uh, if anybody uh wants to um sit down uh and and ask me any questions or go over anything, uh, I'd be more than happy to do that uh and explain it to everyone. Um, I know it's a lot of numbers and a lot of moving parts. But I feel that uh we're in a good position uh with the um bond market that is out there um to get a really good rate and to be able to afford um all of these unnecessary projects. And again, each project that's over ten thousand dollars is still coming to the council uh for approval prior to us beginning uh any action on on this. So you still get another um chance to decide whether or not we're gonna be doing a project or not.
Kathy, I I I have a question, um, and I didn't ask you this before and I I should have to give you some maybe a chance to to explain it. But so we have a number of items, they're not big items, but they're a number of items that we're including in the borrow because of the low interest rate uh that we're going to be able to uh pay. So some of these items that we have in here are normally in our 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 budget, our general fund budget every year. Uh, or we would normally just uh build, just have those through our general fund. How is that going to affect us in future years? Um, if we decide that we don't want to borrow money at this low rate and be able to put them back into the general fund? Or do the borrows there?
Well, what we did, well, what we did was um we, when we were in a little bit tighter situations and needed to have those 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 capital item that would normally be like the car, the squad cars and and the computers in our operating budget. Um, we're looking at that this might be, you know, going forward that going, we might be able to bring those back in and start paying cash with. Um, the nice thing is is that um we do, um, it's kind of like more like putting it on the credit card type of thing where we don't, we don't have it go out for ten years. Uh, we're gonna be paying um most of those um items off within the first uh two years worth of um principal payments. Um, again, you know, we were looking at the cost of money uh and the impact that we would have on on the operating budget. Um, until we can see some uh larger percentage increases in the um levy or to see that um we have that growth in our um um assessed value so that um the taxpayers aren't seeing it in the rate. Uh, we can start moving some of those smaller items back into uh the operating budget. But um, I'm, this has just been one of those things that we've, I've kind of um kind of just used for um creating that extra capacity within the operating budget by um doing these short term borrows.
Okay, and then one other comment, uh, and you might want to add to this comment too. But it, Aaron has that form on the page that you can see with how you feather in the the borrow uh as you go across. And you can see, if you look at the two thousand twenty two C I P column and the two thousand twenty three C I P column, that there are a few years there where we are just paying interest only and and not not paying anything on the principal. And and again, um, this is, as Kathy would probably call it, uh, worst case scenario. Um, hopefully, we'll be able to um pay off uh some principal in those years that we're just doing interest only. But I just wanted you to 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 be aware that there are some years in there where it's interest only. And that is uh just to be, make sure that we keep the uh the mill rate uh right around that that same figure as we go throughout the life of these loans.
That's correct. And and like I said, you know, if you looked at the budget that I presented, um, the estimate that uh by borrowing back, paying back some of that debt service, um, we've had to in the past also kind of back end some of our debt where you're just paying interest until um you can start paying some of the principal. Um, it's going to depend also on the on the market when we do go out. Um, how those bonds uh can get feathered in. Um, if that interest rate is not four percent, then it's two percent like we've uh been borrowing uh at in the past. Uh, you can see that there would be then more principal because I wouldn't have all that interest that I would need to keep that rate. So um, this is pretty much, like you said, worst case scenario uh from Baird as to what um interest rates uh may be in twenty two and twenty three. Um, but um, I would rather show you guys worst case scenario than give you uh something that might not be attainable.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions on the C I P uh presentation tonight? Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Just a comment really to start with, and the packet is really well put together. And I really appreciate the chance to to read the description and the justification and then the pricing. I think that was well done. I guess my only question is, reading the early part that the staff had to put in priority one through five, and I don't see that on there anywhere. So I might assume all these are priority number one items or somewhere might be item three, who knows? Probably not in my business.
Um, Dave, on on the project, um, they're supposed to put in what their priority is. But like most departments, they all tell me that they're priority one. Um, I I I don't see very many priorities number fives. Um, but uh, I think uh when staff uh is putting these um projects out there, um, they're looking at that these are to replace uh either very worn out equipment um that may cause a safety hazard or that um it's it's time for us to uh upgrade um that equipment. So.
And by reading their justifications, I felt like most of them were number ones. I just wonder if there are other number ones that got cut out.
Yeah, that, you know, actually, that's a excellent question. Uh, in years past, uh, you know, when the department had, uh, first of all, they they meet as a group and then they meet, uh, they meet with the mayor. Uh, and we discussed that and there's usually items that we can find so that we can reduce our borrow. To quite honestly, as I went through this whole process, uh, I thought I found some areas, but I didn't because the explanation uh for what, why they thought we needed to do that in in twenty and twenty one uh made perfect sense uh to me. So I could tell you, there isn't any items in here. I don't, Aaron, correct me, but I don't think there's anything in here that I that I, that's not in here that you guys originally presented.
No, that is correct. And as I went through it, I thought everything was well thought out and priority one.
Excellent. Any other comments?
Nice job.
Yeah, I have to agree with uh the people that make comments, Kathy, I that it was a good presentation. I I um, I think uh it was easy to follow and and it was fully uh understandable. Anybody else have anything? All right, uh, you know. So before we adjourn, um, I I, you guys probably saw the message. I've I skipped Josh Warner uh under the uh reports. Um, and so I'd I'd like to give Josh the opportunity and he said he would, he he's willing to. Uh, even though he's hurt, that I forgot him, uh, he's willing to uh to uh give his report at this time. So Josh, go ahead.
Great, thanks, Mayor. Um, on the pack online side of things, the lease that city council previously uh approved for some land for us to build a tower, that landowner has come back wanting more money from us. Um, so we're in talks with him that we're not gonna pay anymore, we're just gonna see where it goes. Ralph and I have had the discussion that we're um willing to find another landowner over there or just walk away from the project. Um, but we feel the amount that we've initially agreed to in there is very fair compared to all the other agreements that we have. And most of the agreements we have are in exchange for free internet connections. So um, we'll know in the next week or two if that's gonna move forward or not. Um, we've been in discussion with the town of Caledonia about expanding internet over there. We visited Reed Field yesterday and I climbed up, I I don't know what the structure's called, but I climbed up the one hundred eighty foot structure at the co-op there. Um, very good view, it would be a very good uh location. We've been in talk with the co-op, um, what it would take to get up there. And upon my surprise getting up there, I found some of our competitors' equipment up there. So we're kind of in discussion internally how we wanna move forward with that. Um, if we move forward with the land lease agreement uh east of Manawa, and that's the one I just mentioned um that the owner wants more money, if we move forward with that, um, we're looking at a new tower here at City Hall, it's taller, and we're looking at upgrading service in the East Gate subdivision. If that all comes together, I'm gonna apply for another Public Service Commission grant to see if we can get some grant dollars to help cover those costs, even though I believe we're in a very good spot with our reserves to pay for all that, with the timing. I think it would be smart just to see if we can get some outside funds. So all the stuff we're looking at, just slowly moving forward. Um, on the community media side of things, since the COVID nineteen pandemic hit, what we're doing downstairs is very different than beforehand. Um, you know, we used to do more programming downstairs, we didn't cover every single meeting that the city did. Just um stuff we've been doing is different. Um, there's some stuff we've gotten comments about, there's some stuff that we're not doing that we feel like no one's noticed at all. So kind of starting this fall and into the winter, I don't know exactly what the process will look like. But I'll be working with the process through my staff just to look at everything community media does. And I'll be getting feedback from the public and staff and uh from the city council and other places just to feel out, you know, are there opportunities or things we should be doing that we're not? Are there things we've temporarily been doing that we should continue? Are there things we've done in the past that don't make sense anymore? And hopefully come out of the pandemic with kind of a refreshed uh look at what community media does and maybe kind of update what we're doing. So that's uh forthcoming. And then I T side, I think, just a lot of day to day stuff. It feels like people wanting security cameras put up, um, doesn't end. And we'll say the police department's one of those right now. We put a couple uh security cameras on Main Street and we're in discussion with Justin on uh when Main Street gets redone, doing some more of those. And that would help with another a number of things with crime prevention that would help in the winter with uh trips and falls, being able to prove or disprove stuff. Those discussions are ongoing. And then I recently placed a handful of laptops into service and have rotated a couple things around. So that's my update.
Thank you, Josh. Uh, anybody have any questions or comments? All right, uh, ready to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second by Alan.
Motion by Hagan, second by Kealan, that we adjourned this committee, the whole meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Against? Motion carried, we're adjourned at seven fifty three PM, have a great night, everybody, go Brewers.
What's the score?
Six to one, Milwaukee's up.